We have the. Salary Board meeting, call it the board.
We need the members meeting first.
Here it is on. All right. Okay, so we're holding yet another meeting of the members of the Commonwealth Economic Development Corporation. Policy Board of our organization there. So we'll call that meeting to order. We get roll call members present, please.
Mr. Eichelberger. Commissioner Foshee.
I'm here. Commissioner DePulito.
Thank you. I'll comment for that. Item four, okay, there's a discussion on actions. I've previously discussed a revised KID's bylaws. Without KID's input, I might add. So we'll go to item A and. There are various revisions that are suggested here, so I'll allow the board to take its direction on that.
Make a motion that we revise section 4.1, add the following additional sentence. The Cumberland County Commissioner or member shall serve as an officer of the corporation or in any subordinate officer position or as an agent of the corporation, dispose offices or positions as are described in section 4.4.
I second that motion.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote no. Just item B.
I will move to revise the first sentence of section 5.2 of the bylaws to remove the phrase liaison county commissioner and to provide as follows. The Board of Directors shall establish an executive committee which shall be composed of the Chairman of the Board of Directors, the Vice Chairman of the Board of Directors, the Secretary of the Board of Directors, the Treasurer of the Board of Directors, and an individual designated by a majority of the members.
Second.
Okay, let's move and second it. Let me put a comment on that. Point out that the folks at KID have suggested that the past president be able to fill the fifth vote. That fifth seat was only ever used as a tie-breaking vote. And I occupied that seat and I don't believe I actually voted more than once in all the time I served in that role. So. I would ask that KID be allowed to, as the operational board for that, the people responsible for making it work. Yes, that they give their consideration, due consideration be given to their proposals or other input that they may offer. So that we'll call. Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have no vote. And just item five, which I have somewhat addressed already. My role there, so. The method, who members to select?
Keith, what would you suggest here to me? I think it should be pretty broad, no?
Right. Can solicit interest, receive resumes. You have a lot of options in that respect. You can obviously include county employee, anybody outside the county, somebody that you think would be suitable for a position in the executive.
Even though the law allows it, I will simply repeat what I've said before, that this practice of populating positions with employees who answer to commissioners can have a very negative effect on the objectivity of the organization and potentially skirts the hotel tax law that requires arms length distance from decisions regarding this.
I understand what you're saying. I don't necessarily agree with your last statement. The executive committee, as I understand it, deals a lot with personnel matters in terms of positions there.
Those are their responsibility and not ours, yes.
That's correct. And I'm not sure what specific role they have if any hotel tax matter that is not addressed by the board as a whole. I'm just making that comment.
The law is clear that the commissioners are not to exert influence in that matter.
And I, I understand that. I'm not, I'm not offering my comment as a debate. I'm just saying that my understanding of the executive committee is such that we deal in personnel matters primarily, that matters involving the implementation of hotel tax. It's generally done by the board itself.
Okay.
So I'm not concerned about interjecting. I don't have the concern that you do about interjecting a county employee or anybody else within the executive.
The executive committee is responsible for all operational matters. And the board would handle the final decision generally based on a recommendation of the folks who are the most deeply involved, which is.
Understood.
I'm just making that as an addition. I'll just, just mention again that if the KID board strikes me should have an opportunity, they're a logical individual. In, in mind, some of them is to put the past president on as an individual who's been intimately involved with the organization, especially the operational issues, particularly over the last several years, that Crystal Queen. I don't know if she's been approached about it or not. She, she helped oversee or maybe screen only significant transitional operational issues for the organization, has past experience in economic development, that's pretty important. And has demonstrated significant commitment to the organization through her volunteer efforts that have certainly pinched on her professional time and her personal time.
I have absolutely no problem with any member of our month of KID bringing forth the potential candidates.
I don't have a problem with that either. But I do think that as we do with other boards, we put out a public call and say, who's interested? The planning commission does that. You know, we can, we can put out a public call and seek resumes. But I, I think it's very important to make sure that the public understands, as we have discussed over and over again, that this decision is up to the three members of KID. It's not up to the executive committee, it's not up to the board of KID. The three members of KID run KID and control the bylaws. So it's great to get input, but the final decision is not up to the KID board nor the KID executive committee.
Well, I'll take issue with that.
If we want to have commissioner, if, if one of the concerns is that we can't have an employee on the executive committee because they're under commissioner influence, then you should have voted yes to A and B. Because having a commissioner on executive committee also exerts tremendous influence.
If we were going to do it this seriously, we would have involved KID because, no, the members do not.
The board does not make the decision.
The members do not, the members do not run, you are incorrect, you do not run KID.
We run the bylaws.
Bylaws, that is correct.
Exactly.
That's correct.
Does not run the bylaws. And that is what you're suggesting is for the tail toe of the dog.
No, I'm suggesting is the people who actually know what they're doing should have a significant amount of input. And like other boards, we should take their advice under serious consideration and not try to manipulate the process because there's a pot of money at the end of the ring.
Commissioner Eichelberger, you are speaking out of both sides of your mouth as you have continually on this subject. Are you ready to call the? West frame where how.
Side upon the method. Okay, yeah, we'll take on.
Exactly, are we motioning? I don't think we come to a specific.
I think the suggestion, suggestion was made to solicit resumes, which we, we do for other boards, yes. But we also vet those in conjunction with people's ability to deliver as we're supposedly.
This is the, this, the method for the members to select. The three members. So the three members would be responsible for the vote.
Is that clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So you, I understand it, your last comment before this brief discussion was to solicit interest from the public. I assume it included resumes and letters of interest to be submitted to the members. And at a later date, you will consider them at a public meeting and make a decision in terms of an appointment.
Correct.
So if that process is acceptable, make a motion to follow that process.
So I would make the motion to follow the processes just outlined by solicitor Ben. That was, that was done so nicely. Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. I'm, I'm prepared to support that because that is somewhat in line with what we've done before. But there's a lot we're doing here that's about what we've done before as well. So I would simply implore the organization to understand its role is simply to ensure that KID operates in alignment with the county's comprehensive plan. It's not to meddle in the operations of the organization. So I would hope that KID would be given a fair opportunity to provide input on rigorous economic development, knowledge and proficiency. Which has not always been the case here. So let's, let's get qualified people and let these people do their job to the best. We've done an extraordinary effort in recruiting good people in with knowledge and making, getting them to make a commitment to this organization, which is well positioned now as a result of a lot of work by the KID executive committee to succeed for this county. So, and that's where the emphasis should be, not elsewhere. So with that, we'll call the, the all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, other business. If not, entertain a motion for adjournment. There, salary. And we'll call meeting in order of salary board. And roll call members present, please.
Commissioner Eichelberger. Commissioner Foshee.
I'm here.
Commissioner DePulito. Controller Whitcomb.
Here.
Right, opportunity for public comment regarding salary board issues. We bring none. We have the minutes in hand, February 16, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 16.
Second. Second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Item five, salary board actions.
I'll make a motion to approve all the salary board actions except this district attorney's office.
I second.
We've been seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I would make a motion to approve the district attorney's item that was discussed before in the salary board.
I'll second the motion.
We didn't second it. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any additional business to come for salary? That, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Then we'll move into the board of commissioners meeting. I'll ask you all to stand. I pledge my. Meeting in order and begin with roll call members present, please.
Commissioner Eichelberger. Commissioner Foshee. I'm here. Commissioner DePulito.
Okay, so in keeping with our consent agenda, now's the opportunity for public comment for any member who's wants to have an item considered by the board commissioner, otherwise so moved to the regular chat. So any public comments? Now, I wish to have an appropriate time to mention it. The item six, letter C, human resources, evergreen solutions, if I have that moved to a public vote, please.
So as Commissioner Eichelberger mentioned, the consent agenda are a list of items that appear routine and not controversial in nature. But if there is a desire to have discussion on any of those items, now would be the time to request those items other than agenda item 6C, which we've already moved to the regular agenda. Now would be that time to mention.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Christopher Patrick. This is my partner, Steve Fleming. We have an item under your consideration today, a loan with the Cumberland County HRA. We just want to introduce ourselves and thank you for considering our loan. We really hope to put the money into good use in downtown Mechanicsburg to bring our building back to life and to bring some new business downtown. Thank you.
Applaud your.
So we have agenda items four through nine, with the exception of agenda items 6C. That is part of the consent agenda that is up for approval.
So entertain a motion for, like approval.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as, as presented with the exception of item 6C.
Your second. No second?
I do not.
Motion dies for lack of second.
I think you could second that.
Could.
Uh, so sir, do we review each item individually or how?
Yes, you take each item individually, including 6C, which had been reviewed earlier.
Okay. All right. So we have agenda item number four, which is approval of the minutes of February 16, 2023.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of February 16.
I second.
Move and second it. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Agenda item number five is approval of personnel after transactions. I move to approve the personnel transactions.
Second. Move and second it. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Agenda item number six is approval of existing contracts, contract extensions, or agenda with no additional cost or increase to the county. Those contracts are for adult probation and parole, the district attorney, human resources, and public safety.
Make a motion that we approve our agenda item 6A through B.
A second.
Okay, move and second it. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, we're doing a separate vote on item C? Or is that part of it?
I heard that is part of the.
Part of my. Okay, can I kiss my vote? Please record, no.
If we remotion that, Gary, you would let me know on AV and D.
If it's being offered as a single motion, I'm.
Okay. Either that, last, yes, it is.
Agenda item number seven is approval of the Cumberland County Planning Commission Appointment Recommendation for Mike Snyder to, to fill an unexpired term of March 2nd, 2023, and expiring on December 31, 2023. I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion on that. I had mentioned that we were discussions with Pittsburgh University Center for Managers planning to bring us a personal sector expertise in that area. They are not able to bring us anybody before the end of the year. The last communication I had from Kirk was that the planning commission was satisfied with me being vacant. I don't know where that, I don't know how that was resolved. Mr. Snyder would be. Put there. He, I do have a question on that. Now, since the municipal planning code, there's Mr. Stone. Since municipal planning code, does it? Does it square up with the idea of a commissioner appointment of a county employee who also would be subject to pressure from the majority potentially? Is that, is there any issue with that?
There, there is no issue with that type of appointment.
Okay, all right. There's Mr. Stoner. Kirk, did I miss the last update? I thought the planning commission said they were okay leaving that, that vacant until Schippenberg could get back most of the candidate.
Yeah, it's a, what I sent up to the board was that we're okay, that we have the recommendation for, for Mike to be appointed. If the board has concerns over him being a, a county employee and wishes not to appoint him, that's fine. We can still retain him as, as a non-voting advisory member, which he's currently serving. And we can run with, with eight members until the end of the year when we, when we have two vacant seats. So I, I don't think that the planning commission said that they're, they're okay with that. They made a recommendation. It's the board's will of how you want to either approve or deny that recommendation.
All right, well, appears the board's will, majority of which will is to have Mr. Snyder appointed. I have no Mike's qualities of excellent public servant. I still have reservations about having employees who are potentially influenced by a majority, as we've seen occur elsewhere this year, as past year. But I'm prepared to support it, so. The motion's made.
And this is a temporary appointment, and Mike is aware of that, correct, Kirk?
Yes, Mike, Mike's aware. It's to fill Joe from May's vacancy to the end of the year, at which time, and, and until then too, we'll be soliciting new applicants for the two vacant seats that will be open at the end of the year.
Be banned for most 10 months.
Correct.
Keith, you indicated this would not be an issue, though I do, I do believe that the point about a county employee does have merit to it. And maybe in the meantime, we could, if the board wants, develop a policy of such. So come 2024, we have something in place. Just my suggestion.
I would be okay with that suggestion.
Okay, so we have the motion. Sorry, did we have a motion on that?
I believe so.
Yeah, I did second.
And you're second. Okay, very good. In that case, we'll call the vote. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Kirk, for the correction. Okay, move this on to eight. Do we have, I'll just go ahead with that since it's an action, except this is a monthly report for the personatary for January.
I'll move to accept the monthly report for the personatary.
Second.
Moving second at all, favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item nine, we have the general transfer authorizations.
Make a motion that we accept or approve the general dispersals, transfer authorizations as noted in item nine, A through that.
I second.
Okay, move and second it. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Just to the regular agenda.
So the regular agenda are non-routine items that will be discussed and acted upon individually. And the first is agenda item 10, which is discussion and approval of the CDVG commercial revitalization and shop setting loan application for 36 West LLC. And I believe we have Rebecca Urick online to discuss. Morning, Rebecca.
Good morning. You've met Steve Fleming and Chris Patrick. They're here to talk about the acquisition of 36 West Main Street in Mechanicsburg, downtown Mechanicsburg, which is a landmark property. Once the Borough Administration Building, complete with a jail that remains in the basement. And since 2017, housing capital Joe Coffee on the first floor. When that property went on the market last year, there was a great deal of interest. While potential buyers included a church and for offices, our buyer would need to take a different approach. Downtown's interest and that of the county, given our charge, was to retain this space for a retail entity, a restaurant, or an asset, a people magnet, bringing customers in again and again, creating foot traffic. For years now, we've been as interested in the business occupying the space as the building itself. We've done well with that formula, not just improving the building to await a tenant, but assuring great places with great spaces to land quality tenants with staying power. Our applicants share that vision and they appreciate that every perfectly appointed downtown boasts a coffee shop. That place where you meet, you eat, you down some joe, relax with friends, and you can count on early hours. That's their plan to maintain a coffee shop. In addition, they envision the second floor as an arts venue with a studio, perhaps, exhibits, retail sales, and plenty of artist gatherings. A lively space that adds color to the downtown. That adds value too, since the second floor has been used mostly for meetings off hours and with limited refreshments from the first floor business. We would look, we would hope, we would encourage that change with a new tenant amping up their menu to offer, offer a little bit more than a cup of joe. The two-story building circa 1888 has a rear entrance to their parking lot, off-street parking lot. That's pure gold in any downtown. And the second floor has two staircases, one in the front, one in the back, which could lead to a potential third tenant. Steve Fleming is a realtor, Patrick, a small business owner of Plummer. And together, they are interested in downtown and not just investing, but engaging. The project teams the county with these two partners and Fulton Bank to finance the purchase of the building for $370,000. The loan has a 2% interest rate amortized over 25 years with a balloon at 10. The CDVG loan would be secured by a second lien mortgage behind Fulton Bank on the property, as well as personal, personal guarantees from Fleming and Patrick. As a condition of this loan, two full-time or part-time equivalent jobs would be created at this address within two years. We appreciate your consideration always and invite any questions you may have regarding the project. With your approval, that will bring our county-supported downtown Mechanicsburg investment to $1.8 million in 2023 to date, and it's only March 2nd. That's something to brag about and precisely what you'd expect in Pennsylvania's most invested in county. Any questions?
Thank you. Thanks, Rebecca.
You're welcome.
I propose. Thank you. Thank you. Looking forward. Okay, there's no further questions. We'll call for action.
I will move to approve this CDVG commercial revitalization and shop setting loan application for 36 West LLC for $100,000 to acquire the property at 36 West Main Street, Mechanicsburg Borough.
Second. Move and second it. There's no further questions. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So agenda item number 11 is discussion and approval of the consistency with the consolidated plan for the annual public housing admission plan for fiscal year 2023. And we have Becky Shaw here to discuss.
Good morning, commissioners. Every year, the Cumberland County Housing Authority has to prepare an annual plan with submission to HUD. And that plan details how public housing and voucher program will expend its dollars and any major alterations to any of their administrative plans. A part of the plan requires local official certification that the plan is consistent with local consolidated plans. And we're aware that the county's consolidated plan identifies affordable housing as a priority need. And the, the housing authority believes that the availability of housing choice vouchers, which were increased this past year by HUD and the VASH vouchers that we were awarded and the public housing located in the borough meets this need by providing individuals and families and seniors and those with disabilities and low income provides them with decent, safe and sanitary housing for their budget. So the housing authority is asking for commissioner approval of the cert, the certification of consistency.
Questions for Becky?
To make a motion to approve the consistency regarding the consolidated plan of the annual public housing admissions plan for fiscal year 2023.
I second.
Okay, so we've been seconded. There's no further questions. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Becky. And before we move on to the next agenda item, I just want to mention that Becky has been a great partner as we have worked diligently to ensure that the treasury portal requirements are fulfilled for emergency rental assistance programs, especially with the last closeout report. So, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. All right. So agenda item number 12 is discussion and approval of resolution 2023-6, which Kirk Stoner is here to discuss and seek approval for the revised restructure for planning.
Thanks, Stacy. Commissioners, as you're aware, the county planning parts department is authorized by the municipal planning code to review municipal plans and ordinances that come into the county. We have our staff down here that do that, and we're authorized to charge a fee to cover the costs of those reviews. We haven't changed our fee in quite a while. We haven't done it in, in 20 years, so it's time. We had our analysis done by staff. We work with our county planning commission subcommittee that actually included an engineer and, well, actually two engineers that actually submit plans to the county. They reviewed our data and overwhelmingly recommended the fee increase that I outlined in the memo that's been provided to you. Through our analysis, we were seeing that we needed an increase between $64 and $113 per plan to cover our costs. So we've proposed, you can see that the fee increase proposal is, is a little bit lengthy, so I won't go into all the details of that. You can see the, the changes that we're proposing to make, and we believe those changes will help us keep our costs in line with, with what our expenses are. So we've proposed, you can see that the fee increase proposal is a little bit lengthy, so I won't go into all the details of that. You can see the changes that we're proposing to make, and we believe those changes will help us keep our costs in line with what our expenses are.
Kirk, other questions? So you said it's been twenty years since that was looked at. Is there a regular schedule that would be more appropriate to be followed on that?
Yeah, Gary, that's a good question. We look at this every year. So we really started looking at it in earnest probably the twenty fourteen timeframe where we started to incorporate a variety of costs, not just the pure cost of reviewing the plan, but also the administrative costs of stamping plans, organizing our information, communicating with the applicant. So we look at that on an annual basis. What we've seen over the last several years is that our costs are starting to increase and that, you know, we need the fee increase to make sure that we're hitting that breakeven mark.
I would think with being a fastest-growing county in Pennsylvania for ten years running, that it would be absorbing a significantly greater portion of your staff time.
It does. We're fortunate. We have excellent staff here and our staff are very efficient. They're seasoned. They know what they're looking for, but we do want to track it to make sure that each year. The issue with the fee is that it's not something we're charged on a per hour basis. So we're really making a projection of how much time it would take with this fee. So there's some that come in high, there's some that come in low. We're trying to hit that balance point. So it isn't something I want to come back to the board and change every year, but as we monitor it year over year, I think when we start to see trends that we're losing money on the plan review side, we should be bringing it back for fee increases.
Thank you.
Chairman, may I make a comment? Before you take action on this item, Kirk, I guess we discussed a few days ago, this will need to be in the form of an ordinance. So instead of approving a resolution changing the fees, I'd ask you to approve the advertisement of an ordinance providing for the fee change. For two reasons for that, the nineteen seventy-seven, I think, previous subdivision land development ordinance that the county approved is really no longer relevant for the most part because all municipalities now, as I understand it, have adopted their own subdivisions and land development ordinances. The form of ordinance that I plan on doing will allow changes to the fees that you're going to adopt in this new ordinance or resolution, so you don't have to advertise.
Do we need to authorize you to draft the ordinance or just to advertise whatever you?
Just advertise because Kirk has reviewed it already, and I think I've gotten it in form that meets his very demanding scrutiny.
It's meticulous. We've heard it was meticulous, Kirk. Okay, that answers my questions. So we need an action on advertising.
Correct.
Yes.
So I will move to approve the advertisement of an ordinance providing for a fee change as described this morning. Similar to the revised fee structure for county review of subdivision and land development plans and sewage modules.
Second.
Okay, so moving second. No further questions. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Agenda item number thirteen is discussion and approval of contracts for children and youth, and we have Jamie Ryberg joining us on Zoom. Good morning Jamie.
Good morning, everyone. I have three contracts today. The first one is Chester County Youth Center. They are a program that offers detention and shelter services, both of which are in high demand for all of us across the state. They are, detention is four hundred dollars a day, shelter is two hundred and sixty-five dollars a day, and they are significantly lower than the state maximum allowable. So we're fine with those rates. The second one is Hemp Field Behavioral Health. This is an addendum to our current contract. We are adding psychological testing and evaluations, and then interim court testimony for that. We had a provider previously that did our evaluations for emotional abuses and to substantiate that, and they are no longer doing that. So Hemp Field has offered to provide that service for us. Both are at a hundred and fifty dollars per hour. And then the last one is just a memorandum of understanding between Dycon Family Life Services and the county, just in order to be able to share information and work together.
Questions for Jamie?
If we have a move. Yeah, to approve the contracts as presented for children and youth for Chester County Youth Center and Field Behavioral Health, Inc., the addendum, and Dycon Family Life Services.
My second.
Okay, moving seconded. All in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also with us on Zoom is Brent Durham to discuss agenda item fourteen, which is discussion and request approval of the contact with Kent.
Good morning Commissioners. I apologize. I'm getting an error on my video. But in any event, this contract before you is with Kent Corporation. It's for the required semi-annual inspections of the chemical fire protection systems at prison and public safety facilities. This is a five-year contract in the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars and twelve cents. We did reach out to a few other vendors for pricing, and this was the lowest quote received. Questions?
I don't see that number wrong. I see an annual decrease of eight hundred and forty-six dollars. Contract amount sixteen one fifty-four. That's for the next one. Oh, shoot. I'm sorry. Forget it. Sorry, Brent.
You had me worried there, Vince.
Believe me, I have myself. My apologies. No questions.
Okay.
I will move to approve the Kent's contract for facilities management as discussed this morning.
My second.
Okay, it's moving seconded. There's no further questions. All in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye. Agenda item fifteen is discussion and approval of the century-length contract continuation, and we have Darren Bish here to discuss.
Morning Commissioners. This is for the annual renewal for our century-length internet connection. This handles the district justices, allows them to come in. It also offers the, all the web applications for the public to access our internet, all that stuff. This is actually a decrease over the previous amount for sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars. And it's a, it's a normal expense to routine. Questions?
Make a motion to approve the century-length, century-length contract continuation Brian Tio as presented.
My second.
Okay, moving seconded. All in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye. Okay, we have Annie Stride with us to discuss a variety of contracts for MHIDD and to also seek approval. Annie?
Yes, good morning. Actually, there are nine contracts, seven for early intervention services and two for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. I'll go through each one just real briefly and with the statement that our early intervention staff and service providers are really struggling to keep up with the need, as you will see through these contract amendments. So the first is with UCP, United So Palsy, and it's an increase of thirty-six thousand nine hundred and six dollars, and it's due to increased need for services. That brings their contract total projected at one seventeen eight eight four. And then the next contract also for early intervention is with Nicole Custer. It's with an amendment for seven thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars, and again, due to increased need for services. Occupational therapy specifically is what she provides. That brings her contract to twenty-nine thousand two hundred and forty dollars. The next is Jill Ricker. Hers is an amendment for thirty thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars due to increased authorized services, and she provides special instruction. That brings her contract to a hundred and twenty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars. The next is for Zulia Therapy. It's amendment, an increase of fifty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars due to authorized, increased authorized services, and she provides occupational, physical, and speech therapy and special instruction. And that brings her contract to a hundred and eighty-seven six hundred dollars. The next is aspirations. It's an amendment, an increase of thirty thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. And again, due to additional authorized services. Aspirations provides occupational, physical, and speech therapies, social work, and special instruction for families. That brings her contract or their contract to two hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The next is central PA therapy connections, an amendment with an increase of eight thousand forty-three dollars due to increased authorized services. Language interpretation, occupational and speech therapies is what they provide. That brings that contract to twenty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars. And then the final early intervention contract is for early birth therapy. It's an amendment with a request an increase of ninety thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars due to additional authorized services. They provide occupational, physical, and speech therapies and special instruction. That brings their contract to three hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. Stop there and see if there's any questions specifically around early intervention. If not, I'll proceed. IDD, okay? IDD, it's an organization called OneWell, and they provide services for in-hole and community supports for individuals with intellectual developmental disabilities. And it's a new contract, and the contract is for three thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. The next one is for alternative behavioral consultants, and again, it's a new IDD provider, and they provide behavioral support, and their contract is five thousand dollars.
I will move to approve the contracts for MHIDD, seven contracts for early intervention fiscal year twenty twenty-two, and two contracts for intellectual developmental disabilities for fiscal year twenty twenty-two as discussed this morning.
Second.
Okay, so moving seconded. All in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye. Agenda item number seventeen is discussion and approval of contracts for the recovery grant program. We have two, a contact helpline and the Salvation Army. Just as a reminder, with each of the grantees, we have subject matter experts who work with the individuals to develop their performance measures, to explain the reporting process, and to certainly work through approving the grant and then submitting that. And so all of the requirements for them to begin that process of providing reports and seeking reimbursements is completed prior to these contracts being brought forward to you. Do you have any questions about those contracts? Are either of these contracts part of the mental health buckets monies? Yes, I can tell you with certainty that the contact helpline is Salvation Army as well. Thank you, Annie. Yes, they both are. Thanks.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the contracts for recovery grant program or contact helpline and the Salvation Army.
My second.
Order made consistent with my past objections to the process, I will vote no on.
No, it's not consistent. It's that you voted in favor of the mental health bucket of money.
That's right. And every time I've tried to do something.
Don't, then you vote, sometimes you vote in favor of the contract and sometimes you don't. There's a complete inconsistency in what you're doing.
Because of the way you have projected it, I have decided to make it very clear.
Nothing to do with me.
Yes, everything to do.
They're your votes. You own them.
So, yes, and I'm happy to explain them to anybody reasonably.
Explain the inconsistency in voting for the mental health bucket of money.
All in favor to the action indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
But list me as opposed, please, based on the bias process.
But you voted in favor of the bucket of money, so was there bias on that bucket of money? Agenda item number eighteen is discussion and approval of the PA Department of Environmental Protection County Recycling Coordinator Program Grant Application. Ooh, breath there. And we have Justin Miller here to discuss. Good morning, Justin.
Hello, everyone. This is the annual Act one oh one, section nine oh three, state-funded recycling coordinator fifty percent reimbursement grant. It is for the previous calendar year. Covers salary benefits and eligible expenses. Based on the data I entered into their spreadsheet, I'm estimating an award of fifty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty cents.
Questions for Justin?
No.
I will move to approve the PA Department of Environmental Protection County Recycling Coordinator Program Grant Application of fifty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty cents for recycling and waste.
Okay, moving consecutive. All in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Our last contract of the day is for the treasurer's office. We have Kelly Neder here to discuss the iGov services contract and also receive approval.
Thank you Stacy. Commissioners, you have before you a request to enter into a maintenance and support agreement with iGov Services to provide an online platform where hotel tax payments can be collected and allow for the remitter to actually make payment and upload information to that platform. It's cloud-based software. This will drastically improve the convenience for the filers, along with providing better documentation management, more efficient collection and payment for filings, improved messaging capacity, and enforcement of rate fees. This will automatically and accurately track calculations, delinquency, and notifications, reduce errors, and duplicative manual entry. So it's a vast improvement over our Excel spreadsheet, and will reduce our reliance on the US postal system. The upfront costs were covered by the Records Improvement Committee, and the annual charges will be covered by the fee that we collect in processing our collections of the hotel tax. So I'm open to any questions you might have.
Make a motion to approve the IG, excuse me, iGov services contract for the treasurer's office in the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and seventy-two.
My second.
Okay, moving seconded. All in favor to keep us saying aye.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty is Commissioners liaison reports, and I'll start by calling on Commissioner Eichelberg.
Yeah, just a handful of items here. Justin did update, even received the approval from DEP regarding the modified waste management plan covers for the next ten years. You recall we had done a preliminary okay on the middle. There was a request for some insubstantial revision to require some additional documentation, and that was submitted. Final approval has come through from DEP that still requires an approval from this board then to file adoption. And Judge said he's going to reach out to you if he hasn't already to make sure we get that scheduled. So that'll be, that'll be in the works. They don't find a resolve the ten-year waste management plan for the county, which we're pretty happy with the result, so. On MHIDD, I did get a more recent update, both from Sue and it's here, in fact. And if you want to address any of the items that so we hear it directly from you.
Yeah, I'm actually, we're going to be meeting a little after this meeting to have some conversation about figuring out next steps with concerns with budget and then the other thing was I did a health fair Tuesday evening, which I had a very enjoyable time meeting with members of the community in Cumberland.
And that was according to your update about all about different services, crisis intervention, suicide prevention, postvention, support. Also wanted to mention, sorry to catch you unprepared, I have the paper in front of me, so. You mentioned about the outreach to schools. Did you want to expand on that a little?
Yeah, actually, this has been exciting. You perhaps recall in September, Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, we hosted the movie at the Westwood Theater, My Ascension. And as a function of that, now school districts starting to reach out, asking if we can do some work with their school staff around suicide prevention. So earlier in the month of February, the movie was shown to the staff in Schippenberg. We've also spoken with the staff at Westbury High School just a couple of weeks ago, so I'm excited about hopefully be able to or strongly influence suicide prevention activities in all our little schools.
Lady mentioned the newcomer. That was, you know, awesome to hear. Excellent meeting, and as relates to. And as relates to the, the ongoing budget discussion. We had some discussion about maybe replicating something of that nature. Out to various communities as a way of reaching the community on an ongoing basis, similar to what we do with some of the opioid community impacts issues. So just wanted to mention how pleased, I think all of us were with that. And the participation of some of the folks there was astronomical. You get good advocates out there. We need to put them to work elsewhere as much, so. Sue did send me some, some things from the IDD side that I think are really worth mentioning. So. The, she said, we've received new employment data from state. And Cumberland Perry IDD continues to be a statewide leader in assisting and guiding individuals to competitive employment within their communities. As of June last year, twenty-four percent of people, that's a hundred and eighty-eight individuals. Between age eighteen and sixty-four were enrolled for IDD services and they are now competitively employed. That number is, is continuing to increase and with the next data release, release. Sue says, we anticipate hitting the twenty-five percent mark. Cumberland Perry is in the top five of all Pennsylvania counties in respect to the percentage of individuals who are working competitively. And for counties of similar size, Cumberland Perry is the top-rated institution in the state. So that's something to be really, really. Proud of. That has real impact for individuals, has impacted community, time of labor shortage too. Need everybody with their, you know, shoulder to the wheel. So we, we gotta stop wasting community resources.
And speaks for a community, you know, the concept of inclusivity and the desire to see, you know, folks with. Disabilities in our community as accepted members, you know, just I think it's impressive.
It's something to be very proud of. So applaud the efforts of Cumberland Perry on that. Just one last thing for EI. Sue did mention referrals continue to be high, the budget deficit continues to grow. We should have ended with the good news, I guess, but this is really a little slide down to here. So there, there are discussions with Office of Child Development, early learning on the matter. Case loads are at all-time high, ninety-five children per service coordinator. So. IDD is actively recruiting new EI early intervention providers. Because we have a familiar situation developing of a waiting list for services.
That links to the contracts that were approved for this one.
We're seeing more than a hundred referrals per month. And our staff, as you heard, ninety-five people that they're trying to meet with and early intervention regulations. Have very specific deadlines, like to fall into compliance. They have to meet with the family within a certain period of time. And staff are hustling and it's becoming very difficult to meet those expectations.
As you know, state is very good at setting mandates, a little less good at helping us reach them.
We agree.
We're hoping to get some results on that.
Yeah, actually Sue met with EI, state EI, a week or so ago to have further conversations about that very issue. Is, it needs to be some relief here.
Thanks. That's a great idea.
Thank you. Well, the new Cumberland event was tremendous, Annie. It was nice seeing you there and lots of other people and I enjoyed the health screenings, those free health screenings. There was that one that is, I believe, particularly expensive. If you go to that company and have it done. That was really, that was very amazing. It was a good, nonpartisan, inclusive community event. So HATS met last Friday and we, Kurt gave us an update yesterday at the finance meeting on the Bridge Preventative Maintenance Approach. So there's a move by PennDOT to work on lowest lifecycle cost in terms of the bridge repairs. So those repairs will be based on risk or important score. And weighted on deck area and daily traffic with the idea being that they can touch a lot of bridges with repairs. Instead of just focusing on one that is in terrible condition. So hopefully that brings our bridges into a better, into better shape. In the Commonwealth. As part of that meeting, there were four tip amendments. One was US three twenty-two in Chambers Hill Road. Two was the Capitol Gateway. Three was the Eisenhower Boulevard Safety Improvements. And then there's a thirty-four turning lane project. And it's installing left turns and center turn lanes and resurfacing on Spring Road. From the Cumberland County line to just north of the Windy Hill Road, Rambo Hill Road intersection in Carroll Township. The bike pit update was done by Mr. Baumberger and although the bikes are in hibernation, they will come out very soon. And there will be an expansion of that program that will connect Hummels Town and Hershey. And that is very exciting and I, and I know that we are talking about bringing that program. Into Cumberland County, particularly in the Wormleysburg and Lemoine area. Projects and developments, we've got the Market Street Bridge. They're still working on the environmental clearance. The IAD one auxiliary lanes in Carlisle, there's traffic data collection and survey tasks are being performed. The twenty-first Center Street intersection, there's deed, deed research going on there. There's Sporting Hill Turn Lane, Cameron McClay intersection. The Riverland Safety Implementation is happening in Perry County. And that's progressing, progressing in preliminary engineering design. The Lemoine bottleneck improvements. They are currently performing conceptual alternative analysis and development along, along Market Street to solve multimodal conflicts. So there should be a workshop in March of twenty twenty-three to present these preliminary concepts and then it will go to public meetings. So that is really something for us to keep an eye on. Vulnerable road users. There are seventy-five locations for vulnerable road users between Cumberland and Dauphin Counties. These are all safety projects, including updating pedestrian signals. The HATS made a submission to designate portions of Pennsylvania Bike Route J. In Cumberland, Dauphin and Perry Counties as US Bicycle Route eleven. So PennDOT's efforts to designate portions of this PA Bike Route J will only enhance too many efforts of highlighting PA Bike Route J and HATS region as a whole. So this is a big move for bicycling in this area. A great, great move for the region and that is very exciting. Pennsylvania has established the twenty twenty-three targets for safety performance measure, sure measures. So that's number of fatalities. Rate of fatalities per one hundred million vehicle miles traveled. Number of serious injuries, rate of serious injuries per one hundred million vehicle miles traveled. And the number of non-motorized fatalities and serious injuries. And these measures are set forth pursuant to the National Performance Management Measures for the Highway Safety Improvement Program. And then finally, I would add that Highway Safety Improvement Program funding. Has really and truly helped to free up several million dollars on the tip. So there's, there's a couple, some several million dollars available for other infrastructure projects in our area. The Stop Violence Against Women Task Force met two Fridays ago. That group is really. Aggressive, really moving things forward, doing an excellent job. And I am gonna sit down with two of our judges this morning to talk about some things. That were discussed at that meeting. So I'll give you an update on that after that conversation. And I would remind you to use the Cumberland County Library System. And that's it. Thanks, Daisy.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner DePaul.
Thank you. The Housing and Redevelopment Authority met February sixteenth. The PA Housing Affordability and Rehab Enhancement Fund has been increased this coming year, starting in July. By us two sixty million dollars. Housing Options Program was approved. We launched later this year with up to one hundred million available for affordable housing. Demolition funding has been made permanent thanks to Act one forty-nine of twenty twenty-two. And land banks have received additional authority, including conservatorship. Thanks to Act one twenty-six of twenty twenty-two. And local realty tax, transfer tax exemption, thanks to Act one twenty-five, twenty twenty-two. Final round of Emergency Rental Assistance Program funding has been requested. There is, our meetings being held in Safe Harbor to discuss community housing development. Organization for them to become one. On March fourteenth, there's a landlord happy hour, which will be held at Pizza Boy Brewing. These have been very popular. As we're promoting the new loan program for landlords who have ten or less units. Moving on to redevelopment to municipalities, want to discuss the bike process, two new submissions. Were submitted to the bike board. The demolition fund inquiries, we received three more from property owners and a school district. Regarding Perry County Agencies, Mary Kuna met with them recently to discuss a bike program with them. And the whole home repair program, which Mary had talked about last time she was in here. The grant application was submitted, which was authorized by we, the commissioners. And that grant will exceed one point eight million dollars. And the funding used to repair owner occupied homes and improve rental housing. Aging Advisory Board, we met February seventeenth. This month, there were three hundred and sixteen calls received for rental assistance, twenty-three received rental assistance. The Cumberland Cares Program has currently forty-nine consumers. Nineteen were discharged from the program last quarter. We had seventeen new referrals. During the Medicare Open Enrollment Season, we helped out four hundred and ninety-five consumers. See, there is a waitlist now for personal care of fifteen consumers. There is no waitlist though for the meals program. And I'd like to report to the Paul Six Senior Citizens are very active and back to full participation. FCOG met on February twentieth. There were two presentations given, one by Joe Gingrich of Latour Communications. Regarding Crisis Communications. And the main topic was the recent train derailment there at the Ohio-Consepania border. And there's another presentation given by Scott Cantor and Fred Landis of PNC. And they offered a no-cost to municipalities and employee financial wellness program. So that, that was quite interesting. And I believe that is all I have. Stacy?
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
So that takes us to agenda item twenty-one, which is a report of an executive session. It was held on February three third, twenty twenty-three. At nine thirty AM regarding personnel. I'll move on then to agenda item twenty-two, which is to ask if there is any other business to come before board today. Hearing none, seeing none, this meeting.